Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, July 20, 2016. It is 4:30 in the afternoon, so we shall begin our council meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Hens.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
First one on the agenda is public comments. Now, in a little bit, we will have a public hearing in regards to the consideration of a rezoning request, so if you have comments about that, I ask that you wait till that public hearing is open. If there are any other public comments, you are welcome to come up to the podium now and share those with us. There are none, so we'll move forward. Onto the consent agenda. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve. Support.
Thank you. Greg, just so you know, we are on the consent agenda, so we'll wait till you get seated. Do you have any questions about the consent agenda?
I have none.
All right. So if there are no questions, comments, concerns, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Funker.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business, at this time, we will now open the public hearing, and this is regarding the consideration of a rezoning request. Before I ask anyone to come up to the podium and share any concerns that they have, I do want to make note of three letters we have received. I will read each one of those, as well as a petition. First, I will read the petition. It is signed by 24 people. I'm not going to list their names. But the petition states, "We, the undersigned as property owners and neighbors who live within 200 feet of property located at 201 North Fifth Avenue, do not want this property to be rezoned from residential single to residential multiple." Again, there are 24 signatures. The letters that we have, the first one is from Dave Werps. If I pronounce anything incorrectly, forgive me. "To the Sheldon City Council, I am sorry that I could not be at the meeting today. I had made commitments two months ago to take some children to Sioux Falls to the zoo. I am against rezoning of this lot to allow an older structure to be moved in. A few years back, one lot was allowed to be rezoned, and the damage to our property values cannot be reversed. I worked hard for many years trying to clean up and improve our property and neighborhood, only to have other people do the opposite. I have tried working with the city, making calls, et cetera, to get the weeds mowed, junk cleared out, but nothing gets done. We need someone to come into this area to help improve this area, not to downgrade it more." If, I'm not sure that name, needs to sell this lot, Gary needs to sell this lot, he should have, in previous years, helped to improve the area rather than letting grass, weeds, and bad sidewalks be an eyesore for so many years. He has kept it mowed this year, but not so much for many years before. If this is allowed to be rezoned for this old building to be moved in, it will benefit two people. It will harm many more. I ask you to drive by this old house, ask yourself if you would want it moved into your neighborhood. It is time for this city to live up to its motto where families come first. It is time for this city to include our neighborhood into an area that they care about. It is time to make improvements in all areas of this city. There is a nice house for sale, empty for two years now, not moving because of the damage on junk-kept areas already. We need improvement, not downgrades. I ask you to vote, do reject, I ask you to vote to reject letting this happen. I ask you to vote as if they wanted to move this old house into your neighborhood." Our next letter is from Daryl and Barb Roseboom to the Sheldon City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. "As a property owner within 200 feet of property located at 201 North Fifth Avenue, Sheldon, we do not want this rezoned. No moving on this property. Our residence is 413 Oak Street, and the property in question is east of ours, which makes it right out our back door. We already have one monstrosity to the west, which the city does nothing about. We are unable to attend at this time, so are requesting our vote again as no rezoning." And the next letter is from Janice Bulkema. "To the councilman, I am writing you to say I am not in favor of changing the zoning of the property at 201 North Fifth Avenue to multi-residential housing and moving the house on Third Avenue on that lot. It is not a nice-looking building. It will take the value away from the homes in the area and bring the wrong kind of people to the neighborhood. We have enough of that a block away from us already. Please consider our thoughts and feelings. We would rather have a new facility for renters or single-dwelling homes there." Those are the three letters we have received. Are there any further public comments? If so, now is the time to step to the podium and share those with us. If there are no public comments, I'm going, okay. We're going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close?
So I'll support that.
All right. Any questions about closing? May I have a roll call?
Hens.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Okay, gentlemen, now, we have the consideration of the rezoning request. As you know, it came before the P and Z. We have their minutes before us in our council packet. What is the discussion at table, if there is any?
If somebody would want to build a new duplex, they would still have to have this land rezoned.
Not for duplex.
Okay.
A single-family home, single-family residential allows for a duplex and a single-family home. Anything more than two would be required to be rezoned.
Somebody wanted to put a triplex on the corner, then it'd have to be rezoned.
That is correct.
To this, so.
Three, fourplex, eightplex, anything above two.
Two would have to be moved.
That is correct.
So.
Is there any, is there a buy-sell that's contingent upon this, or?
Based on the request, the one making the request had a letter for the property owner allowing to make the request for the rezoning.
Okay.
The one making the request does not currently own the property. Basically, the way, and we've had this before, they had a letter saying if they're interested in proceeding before they purchase the property to request to make sure the rezoning went through, that's basically where it's at. So it's my understanding there is not a purchase agreement in place, if that's what you're looking at.
Okay. And even if we rezone it, there's a possibility that this project may not go forward, correct? Because the house hasn't been.
Hasn't been bought.
Bought, and all the pieces haven't been put together.
I can't 100 speak to that, to be honest with you.
Because that's kind of what I've heard from the current owner, the potential people.
Pretty sure of a realtor that was involved, that there is not a purchase agreement in place. I know there's the intent of interest of acquiring the property to put a multifamily there.
Okay.
I guess my concern is that if the owner of the property has a chance to sell it, I think it's been sitting there for a very long time. I hate to, I don't know.
We have other rental properties in that neighborhood directly to the north, if I'm correct, and there's one across the street that's a rental.
Any comments or discussions this way, too? I don't want to.
I just struggle with the idea that we completely get to pick our neighbors.
You never can.
Exactly.
Well, and that's all supposition, anyway. That may or may not be, you know, maybe Warren Buffett will buy it, I don't know. Or rent it. We don't know that.
Might not even happen, anyway, going back to what Brett said.
Yeah, it might not happen. It, you know, it boils down, we want it for Sheldon, but not in our backyard. There's a lot of it. We're short on housing. If this goes through, Jared wants to expand, and he moves it, if they don't move it, they're going to tear it down. So now we have four people that are out. We're already short for rental properties, so now we have four other people that have to look for places when we're short already. If somebody's willing to move it, relocate it, we've still got those four people in town, we have the potential of the business to expand, we have commercial on the south side of that property, a block away you have more commercial property, two blocks away you have commercial property. Rezoning to multifamily does fit in. It's not 100% commercial out there, or residential.
I lived in that area for a long time.
I have a question, if.
Hold on just a second. If you don't, I want to share this thought, because Pete, you know me, I'm going to forget it. Okay, sorry. The thought just came up, and I just, I need to say this. Let's say Joe Smith buys it and builds a house and rents it out. Where's the difference? The concern is the rental of the properties. Am I right? Possibly, from these letters, about their concern about who it would be rented out to. So what would be the difference if somebody built a brand-new home and rented it out? That just popped in my head. Share. Go ahead.
I don't remember.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But that's, I just, I don't talk about that.
My question was, I'm just kidding. My question was, if we would rezon this.
Yeah.
To.
Multifamily.
Multifamily. And someone wanted to build a single-family or duplex, they could do it on that?
That is correct.
So it doesn't exclude that? It expands it?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
There's many multifamily areas in town that have, I'll use Sunshine Edition, that's zoned RM Residential Multiple. There aren't any in that specific addition, but it does allow for multifamily housing.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that currently, are there four water accounts there, et cetera, and so on?
At the house where it's at on Third Avenue?
Where it's sitting now?
Do you know?
I don't believe so. I think it's all one meter.
One meter?
Under the landlord's name.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me finish there, Pete.
According to those letters, too, they're saying that the house is rundown. If that's the case, is the people who want to buy it, are they going to fix it up? Are they going to do something with the outside? I mean, I guess I'm looking at you, and is there, I mean, is that the plan, if it would go through?
I don't know. If you've been by it, it's got a good roof, it's got vinyl siding.
Brandon, would you mind, just so we have it recorded, would you mind, I'm sorry to have you get up, but just in case, to have it recorded. So the question is, the plans, if that house is moved?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, is there plans to?
I would dispute the idea that it's rundown. It's got a good roof, vinyl siding, gutters, good windows, interior's in good shape. There wouldn't really be a lot of work that would need to be done.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, and I don't know if this would help, what kind of process do you go through with your renters?
Do they have to meet a certain screening, or background check, or anything?
Everybody has to fill out an application. We look primarily at income, that they can afford it, and their previous rental history.
Okay. And how many rental, you don't have to answer this, how many rental properties do you have now?
I'd rather not answer.
That's okay. Yep. And then, I know sometimes, how many, we've had calls before that question came up on if we've ever had a nuisance with your property.
I just.
You do acknowledge that every once in a while, we might get a phone call about a property?
Scott just contacted me about, well, a couple within the last two weeks regarding lawn mowing, and I think both of them are taken care of within a day or two.
And is that something that you would do if you owned that property? Would you take care of the lawn, then?
As an apartment, we would take care of all the yard work and snow removal, not the tenants.
Okay. Those are just questions that popped up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Bye.
I have a question for you, ma'am. Of the 24 signatures that we got, it said that there were letters sent to 25 owners within 200 feet of this. Of those 25 owners, is that, I mean, is it some husband and wife?
I'll read the names. Larry Ferwin, Valera Ferwin, Kelly Williams, Daryl Roseboom, Barb Roseboom, Kelly DeBoer, Janice Bulkema, Marion Stirk, Nelvina Stirk, Brent Hurd, Lisa Staples, Bernard Schobert.
Schwartz.
Schwartz. Oh, Buck, Schwartz, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Buck. I'm so sorry. Julie Trigg, thank you. Mike Trigg, Cheryl Weber, Josh Weber, Tyann Thong-Van.
Werps.
Thank you, David Werps. You guys should be doctors, some of these signatures. Glenda Werps, Tiedemann.
Roger Tiedemann.
Yeah, Roger Tiedemann, Dorothy Graves, thank you. Marilyn, Marlin Stellinga, and Marla Stellinga. I'm so sorry, Buck. Would you mind coming to the podium and sharing your name, please? So that we have it on tape and recorded. Thank you.
My name is Ron Tanner, and I was not home at the time you brought the petition around, or I would have signed it.
Okay. I have it here, if you'd like to. We can add that, add to the petition. Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything like a first right of refusal or anything, but I hate to, I'm very concerned about taking somebody that has a potential buyer and pulling the rug out from under them, but I don't know if the people that don't want it could go together and buy that, or, I don't know. But we still wouldn't, we still would lose four. Okay.
There's a possibility.
Sorry, thinking out loud.
It's okay. I do that, too.
That losing four rental spaces was a concern stressed to me by at least one realtor, if not two.
Hold on. I'm sorry, what? Please come up. Thank you. Sorry, Zach, I just hear two conversations.
No, it's fine.
Yes, Tyann? Oh, share your name, please.
My name is Tyann Thong-Van, and I know somebody that lives in that house right now, and she said to me that she's not guaranteed, that if that house gets moved, that she's guaranteed to still live in that house.
Okay.
So she's still out of a place to live.
So even if it were moved, she may not have a home? Okay.
Right. So, then she's out, too.
Mm-hmm.
I hate to publicly.
It's okay. No, I thank you, I just heard the conversation. Now, Zach, would you share with me again?
No, I just, in passing and speaking, a realtor stressed to me the importance of our housing issue in town, that if this doesn't happen, we are going to lose the possibility of four homes or four rentals.
All right, any other? Greg? No?
Based on the recommendation from Planning and Zoning, and the majority of homeowners in the area being affected directly by this, being not in favor of it, I can't support it. I know we need rental properties, but not at the expense of alienating all these other property tax owners, paying tax, owners, property owners that are paying taxes and have concerns as well, so.
Thank you for sharing.
I would recommend we accept the recommendation from Planning and Zoning.
Okay, are you making a motion?
I will make that a motion.
So your motion is to accept the recommendation by the P and Z of declining this rezoning request?
Correct.
There is a motion on the table.
I'll support that.
Thank you. And now we can have further discussion.
I wish there was a way we could try and help the property owner that's being penalized.
I mean, it's not the only place in town that has residential and multifamily in the same block. There's other places in town that it's that way. I mean, close to your backyard, Greg, you have multifamily housing development. I don't see any difference.
But that was, I knew that when I moved in.
Yeah.
It's not that way for the property owners that are living where they are now.
They're right next door to commercial, also.
And they knew that.
Yeah.
But we have, we have a process in place. We have asked these property owners for their input. We have gotten it. To me, they have spoken, so.
But even if you look at the big picture of the city, we have different zoning in different areas just like this. I mean, it's going to come up again in the future in different areas in town. Are we going to vote them all down, then, if it would pop up again?
As they come up, I think that's something to discuss.
I mean, that's the thing I struggle with, is we have them in other places in town, next to residential, and they're working.
Thank you, Brad.
And there, some are rentals. You know, you never know what renter you're going to get in until they're in there. You can look good on paper, they can look bad on paper and turn to be good. You just never know. And with them, I think, keeping the lawn up and that kind of stuff, sidewalks, I think they're going to pay attention to it more.
Randy, any comments? Just checking.
No, I just, I mean, the property owner spoke, but I struggle with, I mean, I struggle with it on the fact that, no matter where we put this, everybody's in favor of it, but not in my backyard.
Yep.
You know, and, you know.
Hold on, we have a motion. Wait, we have a motion on the table, if you don't mind. We have the discussion, then we do a roll call, then you may. Okay, so you may. Just give us one. Hold on to it, though. Thank you, Randy. Comments down here? If you have any to share? If you don't have anything further.
I struggle with it, it's more of a question, and I can wait.
Okay. I'd like to take a roll call, but I just wanted to make sure any questions or concerns are voiced now.
What was the motion?
The motion is not to rezon.
To deny the request.
Yep, so the motion is not to request. Not to rezone, excuse me. May I have a roll call, please?
Hens.
No.
Funker.
Aye.
Hamel.
Nay.
Gils.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
The motion has passed, not to rezone. Valera, when you get to the podium, please state your name. Thank you.
I'm Valera Ferwin, and the reason why we don't want this, I know you voted on it already, but, is that we already have a house in, right across the street from us, and we have had a lot of mess with that. Guy was hung, he hung himself there. We had a drug bust there. The house is falling apart. It's not doing anything. That's why we do not want something else in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. On the corner.
Just to go together.
We'll talk about it later. Okay. Okay, we're going to move forward. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and sharing. Next on the agenda, number four is the consideration of hiring a paramedic, EMT, and Scott is going to bring us up to date on where we are at with that.
Sure, on a brighter, lighter note, we have done, conducted an interview for the EMT paramedic position. As I think the mayor and council are all aware, we've talked about this position for quite some time. The Sheldon Community Ambulance Team is very excited to get someone on board. We would like to offer the position to Kevin Miller, the full-time position of EMT paramedic. We would propose offering him to start at a starting wage of $30,000, and he'd be placed on a six-month probationary period. After a six-month satisfactory review, we would propose to increase his salary $1,500. Also with that, of course, the other full-time benefits as provided to other full-time employees. Currently, he is EMT certified. He is interested in proceeding to get his paramedic license. With that, we would, the city would cover the cost of those classes, and with that, he would agree to sign a three-year agreement, basically on a prorated cost share. So, just used as an example, if the class costs $6,000 to go to, to cover the cost of the class, each year that he stays on in employment would basically prorate a share, cover that cost. So if he'd stay on for three years, his cost of that class would be covered. If he'd leave after year one, he'd be responsible to pay back $4,000 of that $6,000, and so on and so forth. It's typical practice we've done with other certifications in those areas. Upon the satisfactory and successful completion of the paramedic class, we would then also propose an additional $2,500 salary increase, and this, of course, is all contingent upon city council approval, and a postoffer pre-employment physical and drug screening. So it'd be my recommendation to offer the position, which I have already spoken with Kevin, and he is willing to accept, the position of EMT paramedic.
Thank you.
And this came as a recommendation of the ambulance team?
The ambulance team or whatever, who's thoroughly involved as part of the process. They have talked with their entire team, and they are in support of offering the position to Kevin.
And how soon does that paramedic class start?
I don't know all the specifics on the class. I know Kevin and Tracy, you know, have kind of been researching that a little bit, too, to keep the ball moving. He's very interested in getting going and started on that.
August. August, just.
Is it August already? Okay, thanks, August.
Thank you, August. And how long's he been on SCAT? I know he's been there for a while, a couple of years, two, three years, maybe?
At the most, probably.
Yeah.
Not even.
Okay. Is it really? Okay. Yeah, absolutely. I agree, he's a wonderful young man.
And when would he be starting, like, first?
No official start date. I mentioned, as far as at least a minimum two-week notice, that he'd have to provide to his current employer, but anticipation of, I'd charge it as soon as possible.
Wonderful.
Is there any kind of estimated cost of completing the paramedic training?
I do not have those exact figures as of yet, so.
Okay. Wonderful.
Well, depends on, there could be some travel, meal reimbursement, all those extra things that would have to go into it, so to come with an exact figure would be difficult right now.
Okay. Okay.
But it's typical, we've done that, use Lyle as an example, and Jet and whatnot with other positions like that, if they have to go on and get training to require, and there's just been a common practice as far as required employment in order to basically get paid back for that, so.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thanks for all the hard, the work you put into that, and Artis and Tracy. Were you part of that, too, Artis, going through all that, and Tracy? Thank you. I think Kevin will be, make a, he'll be a great employee, he's already a great, you know, volunteer on SCAT team, so.
I'll make the motion to approve that position.
Support.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
We're going to skip number five. I'm just kidding. Number five on the agenda, I said to Scott earlier, what if we don't accept your resignation? But number five is considering the acceptance of resignation, and then we'll also discuss the next steps as far as replacing and finding a new city manager. We will do this by taking action. So the next steps, you know, we'll accept his resignation officially, but we still have time with him. The next steps is we will, we will, we have formed a search committee, and this search committee is going to actively pursue and recruit candidates to possibly fill the manager, city manager's position. I have a list of those candidates, which I'll share with you, Frank and Tom, and mainly what they will do is receive and review said applicants that come in, and then make a recommendation to the mayor and council as to who those potential interview candidates are. After that, the mayor and council will perform the interviews. So. Is there any discussion that we need to do further? Do we have any questions?
Do we need to accept the resignation first?
We'll accept the resignation first, and then we'll, by, well, yes, let's do that one first. So do we have a motion to officially accept Scott's resignation?
So moved.
I was going to say, nobody's going to do it.
Maybe he's going to die, lack of emotion or something.
Lack of interest.
Yeah. I don't think we have discussion, do we? We've already asked him to stay. Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel?
Aye.
Funkert?
Aye.
Gils?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye, with regrets.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, there was no nays there. And then, so the next part would be to approve the search committee. You have those names before you again. I'll share that with you media when we're done.
So moved.
Yes. Thank you. That's, thank you. We're going to talk about the position and also how we're going to advertise.
Just, I think you had a chance to look at the job description and position profile, some details there, the advertising piece that we put together. I guess just one thing we want to bring up, one of the dates we had on there was August 12th. I think when I was putting this together, which was probably a week, week and a half ago, I think that's a pretty tight timeframe. I would recommend we push that back to minimum of August 19th or even August 26th, as far as the deadline for applications. I don't know if anybody has a preference. We could start tomorrow already, I think, to get some of the advertising out.
The 19th is like, oh, four weeks in, right?
Correct. That's common, I think, as far as what you see.
And we can always extend it.
Over that period of time, let's say you don't have a lot of applicants, and the committee says, hey, we'd like to see some more, you could extend that out another couple of weeks relatively easy.
The 26th falls on a Friday?
Yeah, the 19th and the 26th.
They're both Fridays, yeah. Yep. So I would say, let's do a, you know, a full month, so I would say August 19th myself. I was, and if we feel like we're not getting, this, you know, whatever we get in, we can always extend that date, but we can't say by the 19th.
Okay.
Okay. The other question that has been risen is setting up an email, whether it's under the City of Sheldon, they sent out an email to, if we set up and say a mayor at City of Sheldon, it's going to cost us a little bit to have that done. We can set up a.
Gmail account.
A Gmail account, thank you, that's free. So that way, that's where we can request the resumes applicants be sent to. Thoughts on that? Right now, we had it in the ad as sending them to Ange Beckman.
I think you might get different pool if it's to the mayor and not to city management? I, just a question I have about it is, you know, could the pool think that, you know, going to the city clerk, you know, or to the mayor, mayor be maybe more confidential? I don't know.
I think the mayor would be appropriate.
All right.
Correct.
We'll set up a mayor, Sheldon, Iowa mayor, or mayor of Sheldon, Iowa, under a Gmail account for free.
The other thing, are you leave it open-ended? Put a deadline, but then do we leave it open-ended until position filled?
Generally, you see either position open until filled or a set date.
Right.
I don't think you'd put both on there.
Okay.
Just my opinion. Now, we've done it both ways in the past for different positions, depending on what it is.
Okay.
It's certainly up to you if you don't want a deadline on there and if.
I think a deadline, but.
Put a pool, you get a pool of applicants and the committee says, hey, we think we got two or three to interview.
Sure.
Yeah. Let's, I think we should go with the August 19th. Give them a month. Give it a month and see where that goes. Okay.
Then advertising wise, I'm not sure what your interest is on that. Iowa League of Cities.
Yes.
That we can post on there at no cost and get on there in pretty short order. I got the City Managers Grapevine, already had a meeting last week. I know there's a number of folks that are certainly aware of it already that have had some questions. I got the Northwest Iowa Review, Shopper Mail Sun, that we generally can do in a group. KIWA, put a quick post on there. Sioux City Journal, Des Moines Register, Argus Leader. If you want all those, eliminate one, you get to the Journal, the Register, it gets fairly expensive, I'll be honest with you. Ange knows, I haven't remembered costs when we haven't ran costs yet, but.
Does the League of Cities have a process set up just to get that out?
Who's that?
The League of Ci-.
Yeah, League of Cities has a website that we can go at no cost and post it on there. And I'm on that City Managers Grapevine, and that's no cost too, that.
That is an official thing, guys.
How wide does that go?
Grapevine, I don't make that up. That's an actual official.
How wide?
It's a service.
Just goes to the state of Iowa?
No, there's a number of other, I mean, anybody can access and information from the state of Minnesota or wherever.
I guess it would be kind of interesting to know what like the Register costs, the Journal. So we had an idea what the cost would be.
And you just said, you kind of know what it is per.
Do you think?
It's going to completely depend if you run it on a weekend, like in a Sunday classified, or if you run it on a weekday. It's going to be probably over $1,000.
For all three of you or just one?
Just one.
Holy buckets!
Like probably the Register. The Register is the most expensive.
Register's really expensive.
Yeah.
Journal maybe less.
I was thinking you probably at least want to put it in one of those, a Sunday or something. I mean, I think that'd be your best draw. I don't know.
Are there any trade magazines, like public administrator magazines or whatever that you get, that would be more, the targeted group that we're going after? It's not, you know, we're not throwing the net out to everybody and anybody, it's.
Right. I mean, the Cityscape, but that's, you hit the Iowa League of Cities, which is free. They don't even, they don't even put it in Cityscape anymore because everybody, their online website.
And well, that's where I'm kind of going with this too. I mean, between, be either trade magazines or website searches, I think are.
Yeah, actually, I'm a member of ICMA, International City Managers Association as well, so I can check on that. I mean, that goes, that goes international. Goes big, but I mean, that covers, I mean, all the states. That's something that you get about a weekly notice on all job openings there. Australia.
Yeah. So yes, Iowa League of Cities. Yes, to the Grapevine. What else do you have? Yes, Kiowa, don't you think?
Yeah.
Sure.
Locally, the Review.
Sure.
Sure. Journal.
Journal.
Get that a couple, I mean, the Sunday, I guess.
I think a couple Sundays in the Journal.
We've never done Argus Leader. I don't remember if the last time we've done Argus Leader, whether we need to or not. I mean, that's.
I don't know.
Hit the Register once, maybe? The Des Moines Register?
I guess maybe get us a price on it and then I guess you could get us back for them. We could decide then.
Yeah. Jeez.
The Village does a lot of advertising too. I don't know if it would be helpful to talk to Barry and find out kind of.
And I would think with him being on that committee, that's something we can address there too.
Because they're constantly advertising for a position all the time, and they've got to.
Right. I think, you know, we want to get these in the papers as soon as possible. So from here, you know, tomorrow morning, I'd like those phone calls made as far as getting this ad in the papers, so.
Has the search committee said any, they haven't said a date just made or?
No, because we're going through the process of approving that today and how we're going to have a price.
Because I think they'll have some discretion with that.
Sure. Let's hold off on the Register then. Does that sound good?
Do you want pricing?
Would you please get us pricing?
Okay.
And then we'll let that committee know and then go further from there. Yes?
Yep.
Okay. So League of Cities, Grapevine, Northwest Review, KIWA, Sioux City Journal, right?
Sioux Center News. We're going to take one back from them.
Sioux Center News. And then we'll, we'll decide on the other papers with the search committee then. Okay. So I just want to make sure I didn't have any other questions on here. Thank you for bringing this up, because I forgot my notes. So we'll switch the Gmail, we'll make in a Gmail account. We're going to make the date August 12th. 19, excuse me. Thank you, Ange. Any other questions as far as the ad that we're going to put in there? Nope? Okay. Then the search committee, no questions, discussion? And then where we're going to advertise, so. Let's make, if you don't mind, I'd like to do that by motion to approve this step that we're going to do. As far as the search committee, advertising. Got it?
Okay. So.
Two separate motions or?
No, all in one will be fine.
I'll make the motion, we advertise in those things listed.
And approve the search committee?
Approve the search committee.
Thank you.
But should we read the search committee names?
Yeah, I can do that. Oh, yeah. Sorry, everybody. Ready? Barry Wetzel will lead us in that committee. Mark Brown, Judy Winkle, Dennis Gorder, Dan Van Gorp, April Schaefer, myself, Councilman Brad Hent, and Councilman Greg Gils. Do we have a second?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on how we will advertise the ad itself, the committee? May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel?
Aye.